We need to order and I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion, motion to go into executive session, according to article 14 section 74206.
Do I have a second? All in favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so we go.
Okay.
Okay. So we're just going to flip to the third report, official report that we issue. It is on pages 51, 52, and 53. What happens is when a school spends over $750,000 of federal money, they are required to have a second audit done. It's referred to as a single audit. If we look back to page 48, we see that you spent about $3.2 billion of federal money. So you were required to have that second audit. And what we do there is we take a look at your major federal programs to make sure that those programs are being spent according to the guidance. Issues come up as we go through those programs. Of course, we know of findings here as well, but that's not the case for your school. Everything checked out fine. So, three reports, all three clean reports. Nice work.
Thank you. Good to know. So, appreciate that. Appreciate you having me. Go ahead, J.D. says you can go ahead.
Okay. So we're just going to flip to the third report, official report that we issue. It is on pages 51, 52, and 53. What happens is when a school spends over $750,000 of federal money, they are required to have a second audit done. It's referred to as a single audit. If we look back to page 48, we see that you spent about $3.2 billion of federal money. So you were required to have that second audit. And what we do there is we take a look at your major federal programs to make sure that those programs are being spent according to the guidance. Issues come up as we go through those programs. Of course, we know of findings here as well, but that's not the case for your school. Everything checked out fine. So, three reports, all three clean reports. Nice work.
Thank you. Good to know. So, appreciate that.
You bet. If we can, just take a minute, look at the financial performance for your school. Just looking at page 10, which is your major funds. This is a few comments on each of these major funds for you. That first column is the general fund. We're going to focus down at the bottom of that page. So the general fund, the net change in fund balance, we have a loss of $1,148,997. So our expenses exceeded our revenues by 1.1 million. Very bottom number, ending fund balance in the general fund as of June 30, '25, is $10,283,922. I know you guys spend about $4 million per month on average. So that ending fund balance for you is about a two-and-a-half-month operating reserve. We recommend a month and a half to three months. And so you guys are right there with our recommendations. So the general fund is doing well. Second column over, child nutrition fund. We had a loss in the child nutrition fund, $251,000. We had enough of a fund balance carried forward to absorb that loss. And the child nutrition fund, very bottom number, ended the year at $207,997. Most schools that I have audited are showing losses in that child nutrition fund. They range from $40,000 to $300,000. So for a school your size losing $251,000 in the child nutrition fund, that's typical of what I've seen for most of the schools that I've looked at. We may look at that next year. The child nutrition fund ends up in a negative fund balance position. We may transfer it from the general fund to zero now. So we'll watch it this next year to see how it performs. Third column over is the bond fund. Here we simply have our bond levy, which last year we didn't levy anything. And then we have our bond payments. And what I like to see in this fund is the very bottom number, the ending fund balance of $5,560,546. That is large enough to cover next year's debt payments. Our debt payments for fiscal year '26 are about $4.7 million. So we have enough there to make our debt payments. And so we're happy. I assume that bond levy is returning for fiscal year '26? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Fourth column over, school district modernization. I'm sure you've heard about the bond that the State Department of Very good job there.
Good to know.
On pages, yeah. On pages forty-nine and fifty. Second report that we issue is a report on internal controls. So we look at your review processes at the school. We're not required to express an opinion on them. But we do review them, make suggestions where we need to. We feel like the review processes that you have are adequate for a school your size. And so no findings in this report either. This is also a clean report.
Okay. Hold on a second. We're having some problems with getting online. Can you hold on a second, Dan?
Sure.
Yeah, JD needs to get in also. So, sorry. Go ahead, JD says you can go ahead.
Okay. So we're just going to flip to the third report, official report that we issue. It is on pages fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three. What happens is when a school spends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money, they're required to have a second audit. It's referred to as a single audit. We look back to page forty-eight. We see that you spent about three point two billion dollars of federal money. And so you were required to have that second audit. And what we do there is we take a look at your major federal programs to make sure that those programs are being spent according to, uh, according to the guidance. Issues come up as we go through those programs. Of course, we don't want to find any error as well. But that's not the case for your school. Everything checked out fine. So, three reports, all three clean reports. Nice work.
Thank you. Good to know. So, appreciate that.
You bet. If we can, just take a minute, look at the financial performance for your school. Just looking at page ten, which is your major funds. This is a few comments on each of these major funds for you. That first column is the general fund. We're going to focus down at the bottom of that page. So the general fund, the net change in fund balance, we have a loss of one million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, nine ninety-seven. So our expenses exceeded our revenues by one point one million. Very bottom number, ending fund balance in the general fund as of June thirty twenty-five is ten million, two hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars. I know you guys spend about four million, four million per month on average. So that ending fund balance for you is about a two and a half month operating reserve. You recommend a month and a half to three months. And so you guys are right there with our recommendations. So the general fund is doing well. Second column over, child nutrition fund. We had a loss in the child nutrition fund, two hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. We had enough of a fund balance carried forward to absorb that loss. And the child nutrition fund, very bottom number, ended in the year at two hundred seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven. Most schools that I have audited are showing losses in that child nutrition fund. They range from forty thousand to three hundred thousand. So for a school your size losing two hundred fifty-one thousand in the child nutrition fund, that's typical of what I've seen for most of the schools that I've looked at. We may look at that next year. The child nutrition fund ends up in a negative fund balance position. We may transfer it from the general fund to zero now. So we'll watch it this next year to see how it performs. Third column over is the bond fund. Here we simply have our bond levy, which last year we didn't levy anything. And then we have our bond payments. And what I'd like to see in this fund is the very bottom number, the ending fund balance of five million, five hundred sixty thousand, five forty-six. That is large enough to cover next year's debt payments. Our debt payments for fiscal year twenty-six are about four point seven million. So we have enough there to make our debt payments. And so we're happy. I assume that bond levy is returning for fiscal year twenty-six. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Fourth column over, school district modernization. I'm sure you've heard about the bond that the State Department of Education ran. They passed out the bond money to each school to cover facilities costs. That is your portion of that money, that bottom number there, ending fund balance, twenty-four billion, eight hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars. That money is, I would say, pretty restrictive. It should be used for capital projects, major improvements. The one caveat that you aren't dealing with is any interest that you earn on that money can be transferred to the general fund and used for routine maintenance. And so I'll let you decide on that if you haven't already, to transfer that money. But those are your major funds. We did audit the non-major funds, got all checked out fine. A lot of those are federal funds, at zero now, so not a whole lot to discuss there. One final note, what's coming up in the next couple of years. The single audit threshold is going up from seven hundred fifty thousand to a million dollars. You guys spend enough federal money that it doesn't really matter to you. You'll always require that second single audit that we do for your federal major programs. So that's not changing. And then in the future, we will have a few accounting changes for IFARs. There's a few funds and a few account numbers that are going away. And have you guys hired to replace Brad yet?
Yes.
Yes, we have. We have Aya, what I want to say. We do. Jonathan.
Jonathan Gillen.
Jonathan Gillen.
Jonathan Gillen.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we know Jonathan. We've worked with Jonathan on several schools. He works with Kurt closely, and so that'll be interesting.
Does that mean good when you say interesting?
Yes, that's good. He does good work. He's great to work with. So that's good. And we'll reach out to Jonathan later on. We'll connect with him later on. That's all I have for you tonight. And so I'll open it up to questions at this time if you have any.
Any questions? No, I, just a comment that it's nice to know that we've been financially fiscal with some of our money. And I think that's important for our patrons to realize that. And we're okay. So thank you for pointing that out to us. Any comments or questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another board meeting I'm going to head up to. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for your report. It was good news.
Yep. Bye.
All right. So now we're going to do the celebrations.
And I'll introduce Jonathan.
Okay.
So this is our new CFO, Jonathan Gillen. We are very, as you heard, Danny, been verified after stuff on this one. So Jonathan is a, it's a huge win for us to be able to have Jonathan with us right now because he's, was with this West Dade for eight years and now he's with Charter Impact. But they won't, they didn't do charter schools. But he came up, we met up with him. We were just looking for advice and they came up with an idea of how they could help us. And Jonathan has helped us when America came in. He's helped us, he worked with Brad, so he knows us. And so we're really tickled to have Jonathan live. Jonathan presents for the state, for the state, helps them with their finances too. So feel free to look.
Welcome aboard and thank you for putting your time in. I know that it's kind of a, has a time limit. But we're glad that you're here to help us as we get ready to find another person. So thank you.
It was nice that we didn't lose Brad. And Brad was great. We really missed Brad, but, I mean, missed Brad leaving. But the day Brad left, Jonathan was able to step right in.
Yeah. I think this audit speaks to what Brad did, so I'm very, very pleased. So welcome, Jonathan. And we look forward to having you in our school this year.
Thank you very much. So that is a big celebration for us. I know it's not on here. But I just briefly wanted to say, you know, we've been doing parent universities. And one of the big ones was the Senior Parent University. And we hosted that, or the high school, Robbie and Misty hosted that. The Monday. And that was the first senior parent. And we didn't know how many to expect, but there was over two hundred parents there that, on Monday night. Some of the seniors came. But it was, I mean, we were just overwhelmed by, by the parents who came and wanted that. Wanted that parent university. So that was really good. We got some really good feedback on maybe, you know, what we would do different for the future. We got good feedback from parents that, that when we were there, but also like, hey, what else would you like to see at this parent, especially for seniors? And we got, Allison said we got some good feedback from that. So we will just keep going with these because they seem to be the parents who like. And it helps them. So, with these different transitions, you know, sixth grade and ninth grade. So each time, we're trying to make them better. And help the parents make those adjustments and stuff. So, we have dates. We'll show you a date later. Oh, there they are. For the middle school and kindergarten and, and then the high school.
Yeah, I really like us doing this parent university and to bring up things, issues that the community might have that we can help and being transparent. So thank you for doing that. It's a great thing. It sounds like it's been volunteered.
Yeah. I mean, they just kept coming in, so.
Good. All right.
Okay, Stuart is going to get it. So there was a, the FFA students wanted to come and present, but the presentation was much bigger than we thought it was going to be. So Stuart, in less than a minute, is going to.
Okay, so I was voluntold that I was going to be doing this. So, so thank you though. I think this is really important. The conduct team is going to come in and show you what they do. And it was a group of freshmen that won the conduct last March at the state meeting in Quin Falls. They showed a lot of product points. I was there. It's taken on your feet. It's a pretty cool thing. It's part of the magic procedure. We need processes and procedures, and they did a fantastic job. But just to let you guys know what's going on with that FFA program. We have at the end of this month, twenty-five kids going to Nationals in Indianapolis. Nineteen of them are participating. We qualified four teams, conduct team, marketing team, nursing landscape, and act mechanic team. It's the most we've been sending, we've sent to state, or Nationals in a long time. Last week even, we had, our rage team took first in state. And we have qualified for Nationals, that's our National in Tyler. And good, it's close. And we had a second place with Swells and Land Judging. And they qualified for Nationals in May in Oklahoma. So I'm going to tell you the success of these kids. They were really tough enough and showing, you know, really well. Minute and a half.
Thank you. All right. Patron comments are next. We have some. All right. We're going to start with Lane Saxton before I let you come on up late. Just to let you know kind of the ramifications here. You have three minutes. Of course, we can ask questions just because this is an open E. And.
I just have some suggestions.
And we love hearing them so that we can do that. So we're glad you're here to do that. You need to state your name and your address.
My name is Lane Saxton. I live in Kuna, Idaho, eleven eighty-five South Ash Avenue.
All right, you can go ahead.
Okay. When I, I seen the old gym on the board agenda, I, I quickly got a headache. Because back when I was here, and I was here from ninety-six to twenty-fifteen when I retired. And I got asked by the board to appraise the old gym and see what it was worth. This was shortly after I took the old building away. It was what, one of my first jobs was to finish, turn down the old high school and haul it up. And then I quickly became involved and ended up building seven facilities after as project manager. But when I seen the old gym come up for sale, I go, what? People come out of the woodwork. Var was one of them. And some of the big names in Kuna, which Thornton is still a big name in Kuna, Nicholson, come out of the woodwork. What are you selling that gym for? What are you even getting it priced for? And I said, well, the board just wanted to know, one, what it was worth and what we're going to do with it. So it quickly got kiboshed. And it never went, it went away, but always we had people from the community ask about it. And even when I took down the old school, there are still parts and pieces under that parking lot that shouldn't be disturbed, is the best way to put it. And when we did that, I got accused of not being transparent, which takes me to the other suggestion. So please consider the old gym. You have the right to accept or reject any bid. And we need to keep it. And if you want suggestions of what to do with it, give me a call. Hillary is not here. She used to have my number on speed dot when I was working for the district. So I have all kinds of suggestions because I know the history of the district. And, and by the way, your parents never got thanked correctly for the ninety-eight acres that we got from them. Thank you very much. And for following in your mother's footsteps, you, Conley. And, and that's very good to support the school and the support the authority the family has. The other thing is transparency in what I just witnessed with the audit. I don't know what we're paying for an audit, but they should be here in this room. And this room is not big enough to hold bill board meetings in. When you have a brand-new cafeteria right down the street that will house people who are not crammed in here and can't breathe and can't hear. So transparency was huge in this district when I was here. And we had to find out the hard way. When I bled out my conception of the high school and we didn't get the voting public involved and it failed miserably when we went out to bond. Kim, you remember that? So transparency is everything, and we're not getting it in this facility. This was designed for three things. That was maintenance, food service, and transportation. And it's been hacked to death. Needs to be left alone from this point on and have board meetings where everybody can come.
Thank you, Lane. Your talk is up, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate your opinion. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you.
All right. The next is Melissa Nielsen about the candidates.
She's in the overall group.
Okay. Go ahead, go get her.
There's a small lady.
There she is.
I'm going to the coconut's hole.
Yeah. Well, then let me come join.
Do start. My name is Melissa Nielsen. I'm the KDA, Kuna Education Association president for the teachers right now. I just wanted to, I know trustee Grant and trustee Thornton had such a fun time when they were campaigning and doing a public forum that we wanted to offer that to our other candidates that are running for election right now for the school board. Next Wednesday, October twenty-second, KHS at the K-PAC, from six to whenever, we would invite you to come and answer some questions. We'll give you the questions ahead of time. There, it won't be a debate or anything. It'll just be like when they presented, answering some questions about our district, our community, what your ideas and plans and goals are for our future.
Tell me that, David, can I?
October twenty-second. Next Wednesday, six to whenever the trustee talk. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Melissa. All right. I slaughtered his name, so Cal. Did I slaughter it back? No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, we'll give you the floor. Please state your name and address.
I'm Cal Litke. I live at twenty-one eighty-five North Destiny Way in Kuna, and I do vote. Let me help you come to the only logical conclusion regarding whether the status quo should remain or the school district should opt for a for-profit contractor to get the students of Kuna to and from the school. Well, the only argument for turning the transportation over to a for-profit contractor is this: money. Should the school board be fooled into taking a low-ball offer from a for-profit contractor that will surely increase in years two, three, four, and so on, negating any perceived value or savings in the first year? Or should the school board vote to continue with the present system, which has proven its excellence with the students, the parents, and the community at large? What values are present with the current situation that are not seen on any bookkeeper's ledger? Well, I'll be to explain some of the hidden values that are worth far more to this district than just mere money. Any business owner will tell you that finding a loyal, hard-working, dedicated employee that is reliable and will show up day after day, year after year, is like finding a diamond in a rough. I have to tell you, the Kuna School District transportation system here has sixty-plus diamonds in this room. And we all have different reasons for driving a school bus and keeping the students safe. Every one of us is loyal to the district, not for money, but because we see ourselves as caregivers. We want to serve the children, the parents, and the community. We want to keep the students safe. If there's a problem with a student on the bus, it is us, the bus drivers, who reach out to the parents and call them. We strive to make a personal relationship with the students, with the parents, and the community at large. This is something that money just can't buy. It's not seen on a bookkeeper's ledger, but it is here in this room. And I know you all can feel it right now. Another significant reason to vote for keeping the status quo is very, very low employee turnover. Now, while driving a bus, driving a bus for a for-profit company, transport, the turnover is very, very high, more than a hundred percent in two years. But here at the Kuna School District, it's less than twenty percent. A significant reason for this low turnover rate is what I like to refer to as a culture of community. Now, recognizing that the district cannot pay very much to attract loyal employees together, Brenda and Yvana have worked tirelessly over the years to create an environment that acknowledges personal relationships and individual needs of the drivers and staff, while, while stressing the primary objective of student safety. Put quite simply, they have created a working environment that values humanity over the dollar. Now, because turnover is very, very low, every driver gets to know each student, every parent, and becomes sympathetic to their needs. In short, the longer a driver spends, the longer a driver and special needs aide spend and remain time here in the department, the greater the relationship we have with the student and the parents and the community.
Cal, I get you to kind of wrap it up a little bit.
Sure, sure. This is a value that a for-profit contractor just can't buy. So what I really wanted to ask you is this. Is it really worth stepping over a lot of these, which are unseen values that you have right now? Over this? Thank you for having me.
We have Yvana Chandler. And she's going to be talking about transportation also. So if you want to state your name and your address.
Yvana Chandler, one hundred West, no, yeah. Thank you, Superintendent Pecanall, Chairman of the Board, Nixon, and Philustis. My name is Yvana Chandler. I've been with the district for eighteen years and as a district director. Probably know more names of students and their individual bussing than most teachers probably know of their whole school, of their bussing information. I often say that, excuse me, I'm getting a little hot. I often say that I need a shirt that says fifty-eight hundred kids are counting. So I got them. They are all my children. We all feel that way. They are our children. Out of the forty-two drivers, which include our on-call drivers and our trip drivers, nineteen of us have been here for five years or more. One of our drivers has been a driver for forty-plus years. One of our drivers has been to the school bus driver international safety competition several times, has placed twice. Most of us, within these years of experience, have raised kids through the district, and we feel that we want to get back to our community. Low turnover, as Cal touched on, years here mean that our drivers know most of their students. Why is this important? They know their students. They know their stocks. Safety is a continuous process that should not be interrupted. We work hard to make sure that our drivers have all the possible information that they need to build safer homes. What's the level of care is gone? How many years do you think it would take to build that back with what we've got for experience? Would you ever even be able to get it back? Getting it back means you have to put the bond out. Getting it back means you have to put the bond out for five buses back because all of the buses would be going to them or they'd bring their own. Then you would have to hire those drivers to drive those buses. But if you lose all of this experience, will they come back for benefits? Because they've lost their relationships that will keep them here. They come for two reasons. For the children that they love have come to let them care about as well as the benefits. To summarize, once you go contracting, it would take so many years to get it back. We probably none of us would even be here this year. When we consider the cost of what it costs for our teachers to be educating our children and what really matters, we often ask ourselves, does it work? Sometimes that does mean spending more. When it comes to the safe transportation and care of our children on a bus, we need to ask ourselves that same question. While maintaining that contracting would ultimately cost us more based on that amount of research, deals, I'm sure you'll see later state figures and general experience. I have to ask, even if I'm wrong, and it is more expensive, what is the level of safety and care of our students worth? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for everyone who testified tonight. We're going to go ahead now.
Just Jonathan's going to, just give us, it's under the reports, just the L2 reports, just the report.
Okay, we're moving.
And then you're moving up to the.
Okay. Oh, I got you.
Sorry, I moved.
No, you're fine. Trying to go through the agenda.
Superintendent Trustee, thanks for giving me a couple minutes. So you just did a quick L2 form update. So essentially, when we had run initial projections on the L2 form, we were anticipating that would be roughly $114 per 100,000. So I have good news. This is good news financially, so it's fun. I mean, as people, we don't always get to share that. So it's nice to share some good news. We're projecting roughly $47.68 will be your actual L2 rate. So much lower than initial projections. So that means less for non-taxpayers, less property taxes that will be levied. Largely that is driven off of two components. It's growth in our market rates, so more houses, creating more population in the area, creating more businesses. That's helping reduce the levy rate. The other thing is the legislature downtown continues to appropriate household 292 funding, which is those dollars that are specifically identified to reduce property taxes. And you got roughly $2 million from where we did it last year, which will be applied to the property taxes thus reducing the rate. So really just some great news to be able to share with you guys and share with the community about what we're doing in the school council. With that, answering the questions.
I got a question. What was the part of this $47.68 per 100,000?
I'm sorry, I didn't want to say. Don't quote me because it's funny to look at it today. I think it was 119. See, 114. 114.
Oh, so it's really.
That was pretty good for the first day. I tried to look it up real quick. Like I knew that question might come up and I was like, let me see if I can figure this out.
You are a number guy for sure. Good job. So that's really gone down very significantly.
So it's a difference in two areas.
Yeah, 100,000.
The legislature really.
And why did we get 2 million more? Was it because of?
It was an increase in the dollar amount for the funding.
For this year?
Specifically. So that's always going to be kind of the question is what's that dollar amount going to look like the following year? I'd love to be able to tell you we know what that number looks like. You actually don't really know what that number looks like until the payment shows up, which this year was on August 31st. So you kind of get some ideas of what the number's going to look like around the first August. But really, there's a lot of sales tax revenues that go into that and so it's a lot of calculus.
So really more good news for our community.
Yeah.
The taxes.
It's great news for the community this year and we're hoping it continues.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Jim. All right. Now.
This is great.
This is where I'm doing the transportation. So we have transportation assistant superintendent Brian Graves, Jason Ready, and manager Brenda Saxton to present.
Kim, you want to move it up?
I'm.
Just.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess what I need to let you guys know is we asked for this because so many times in our community, we get called upon that we're not being physically smart and that there's different things we can do. And one of the things that comes up over and over again is, well, why don't you contract out for transportation? And we really felt like that was the question that needed to be answered. And so we did look into it. And so here are the things that we found out about what it's going to cost us. And we'll go from there.
I always think you move it up so they can go because they've got to get up for a week.
Oh, 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 sorry. And we want to move it up so you guys can get home and get to bed. So we've got all of our kids in school tomorrow. So does that sound good to you? Sometimes we're not on the same wavelength.
I think our audience members are going to be pleased with this presentation tonight. So just quickly, like you had mentioned, trustee Nixon, last month, kind of tasked us with doing an RFQ process to look at what it would take to console our transportation services out. So we went through a few steps. We met with our transportation department. We also met with legal counsel and talked through what some of the pieces and parts of that would be. And then additionally, we talked with other neighboring school districts and asked them for their contracts that they have. And then basically modeled what our costs would be if we were living in that contract. And so based on all of that, we have a recommendation for you to. Before we talk about that, I think Brenda wants to share some just cost stuff with you.
So there's what's called the funding cap model spreadsheet, which is quite larger than the spreadsheet. We, what we did, we moved it, we were doing a comparison between some school districts and contractors that's in the same size as us, basically, same numbers. That potentially student, you know, students you can see and cost per mile. And as you can see, Kuna's either the, in this group of school districts, we're either the cheapest last year or in the second. And then you see where the contractors here, for instance, the years Caldwell, just in '22, their cost per mile was 785. Then they jumped to 1137. And it's, and it's a little bit lower this year. You can see where Twin Falls is 576, 69, and eight. They, they will continue because they're here to make a profit. We, our increases is because of inflation. Everything costs more. You can't even get bread for the same price anymore. So it's going to continue to go up. And we have a deal here doing it in-house and we have great people. And I'm going to show up, so you can ask questions for me.
I don't have any questions. Any questions? I think we've kind of looked at this dollhouse. So thank you. Thank you for your bus crush, people who have called us and brought us to some of these explanations so that we know what's going on. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, so kind of based on the beginning stages of that RFQ process, our recommendation tonight is to not continue moving through that process and to just stay in-house because obviously we have a good product and I think it is cost efficient, right? As you just referred from Brenda's.
I think there's a lot of good reasons to stay in-house. Cost being one of them. Also loyalty to the bus drivers, but not only loyalty, just knowing that they get to have Percy and they get our benefits and we don't have as high a turnover as some of these other districts around us is important. The fact that they know and are hard workers, I just, all the way around, it's just a good idea.
Kim, could I just add, I think this is my 11th year, but every time that Brenda, like maybe they lose one, Brenda and I have always been like, there's going to be someone's going to show up today. And it always happens, right, Brenda?
Very.
Oh, there you are. They're always because they want to come here.
I think autonomy is another good reason to keep it. You know, situation, let's say I was a teacher for a long time and I had a field trip and I didn't get the right person. You guys have been so good about just, hey, we did that best to you. You know, where if it was a contract, we didn't have that autonomy, they have to cancel the whole field trip and have outside kids. So a lot of that, I think, is so important, that autonomy that we have with our bus garage. So I think there's a lot of good reasons for this. But I also need to say that it's important that we show our community that we are physically responsible to go out and make sure it's what's good for us and what's good for Kuna. Because we know when we go to pass those bonds and levies, that's the first thing they say, well, you're not using your money well. And I want to make sure they know that we're doing that. So thank you.
I make a motion that we keep the transportation department the way it is.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any more discussion or comments?
What are we going to be looking forward to replace Brenda? What does that look like?
I heard they're keeping it exactly the same, so that would be interesting. Our position as opposed to, I would have put a closing date on that today. Not today. But and then from there, what I get to do is I build a committee. I can't have a committee of 50, but at the same time, transportation will be represented. We will have somebody else from operations as well, one of our managers. And then we will do a screen of the interviews. And not starting, of the applicants. From there, we'll kind of, that's kind of our first round. I mean, if I applied for this position, I would be screened out because I don't hit their qualifications. So we get rid of the people that aren't qualified. Then we do a first round. Then we'll hopefully bring a candidate or two to our leadership team for a position. The goal would be to have a month or two with Brenda. If we can sneak some consulting out of Brenda as well.
She told me she'd do that.
Yeah.
Sorry, Elaine. Sorry, I already had a question.
Can we go to the side?
Absolutely. If we can't keep Brenda, then our goal would be exactly what Kim said. When we do lose a driver, we have to replace him. Hopefully that driver is as good. Hopefully that supervisor or manager will be asked for.
Good question. Any other discussion questions? Okay. Michael.
Hi.
Jamie.
Hi.
Alana.
So good job.
Thank you, guys.
So thank you. And I'm just going to say, you can all go home and get your rest tonight. So that's why you can get those kids brighten their little.
And we appreciate everything that you guys do.
Yes, you do. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Wow. She's in the back, just came out the way to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. I'm sorry.
It was cold.
I'm sorry. Save me a hard time last time.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate you all making it for today. See you, Joey.
This is good. All right. I think.
Kim's policy.
Yeah. The policy is not this. It is Kayden Russell who is next. Kayden. Man, all of a sudden, Brett Bro is ready.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. I'm excited to go over your survey results. As a reminder to board and everyone else in the room, the board did conduct surveys last year prior to them pausing their superintendent search. When we resumed the search this year, they decided to reconduct survey results and just see if they could capture anyone else or anything different. Or I know there's people moving in and out of the district. So they wanted to be as up-to-date as they could with their community. So I have given you in your packets here just kind of an overview sheet of your surveys for the 2024 survey and then the 2025 one that we've just conducted. So I will just go over those really quickly. So this year, we had 238 on the community survey, 238 survey takers. That is a little less or a little more than 100 less from last year. Last year on that community survey, we had 364 survey takers. Now, that is probably a mixture of some people took the survey last year and didn't want to take it again, or, you know, other situations. But I do know that it was spread pretty widely and people weren't given the opportunity to take it. So of the community survey, 85% of those who took it were parents or caregivers. 17% of those who took it were employees. 18% of those who took it were other residents. And then a little less than 1% of those who took it were students. And this is going over the 2025 survey. For moving on to question two, question two asks survey takers to rate the top eight professional qualities that they are looking for in the next superintendent. So this one, I went and compared to last year's survey from this year's survey. Every answer in the top eight was the same as last year's survey. The only difference is the last two qualities were flip-flopped. So this year, survey takers indicated that their top eight were that they wanted to see a superintendent with experience with budgeting and school finance, that they had successful experience managing staff, that they fostered positive community relationships, that they have positive experiences dealing with conflict and problem management, that they understand the importance of accountability for and by staff, parents, students, and patrons, and that they have a strong background in curriculum supervision, human relations skills, and team building, that they demonstrate a strong commitment to closing the student achievement gap and improving overall student performance, and that they show excellent communication skills, including speaking, writing, and listening skills. On each of our survey questions, we provide survey takers with the opportunity to provide some comments. Some of the top kind of comment topics that we saw on this one were that they, in a part to those qualities, they really emphasize that they want to see transparency and accountability, that they want to see familiarity even with Kuna's growth challenges in their culture. They want to see support for students and staff retention. They want to see a willingness to stand up against political pressures, both state or both the state and local. And then they want to see experience with communities, bonds, and loveies slash experience managing population growth. And please stop me at any time if you have any questions about anything. So and then the next question, question three asks survey takers to rate the top five personal qualities that they want to see in the next superintendent. So we saw, again, this was exactly the same as last year's survey. The results did not change one bit. People took the survey, want to see a candidate who shows judgment and common sense, has the character and high morals with unquestionable integrity, expects trust, transparency, and openness in leadership, shows respect for all students, staff, parents, stakeholders, and the community at large, and is committed to a student-first philosophy in all decisions. So those did not change at all from last year, which I think is pretty great.
Yeah. Can we find that person is the question.
I'm going to try my hardest.
That's a lot of.
Yes. Some comments that we received under this one were that they want to see a person who understands teacher challenges and will show teacher support, has the courage to address conflict, is willing to listen and visit schools frequently, has the ability to separate personal political beliefs from their leadership decisions, fair and partial leadership, and shows consistency and fairness. And again, almost all of these topics were mentioned in the survey from 2024 as well. Question four of this survey asked survey takers to share some questions they would like to ask the new superintendent. I won't go over all of the questions, but I did provide some suggestions here. But just some topics of questions that we saw were related to accountability and transparency. Something that I saw emphasized a lot more in this survey versus last year's survey was teacher and staff support. So that was mentioned a lot in this section. Community connection and visibility, budgeting, fiscal finance or fiscal management, growth and overcrowding, student-centered leadership, and special education. So.
I was glad to see this because it gives the board some place to start with the questions to ask. And so that was great. I until this is where we'll probably start.
And that's what I would recommend is when you get to the point where you're going to start interviewing candidates, even when we include the essay questions on the application itself, I would encourage you to review these survey responses and pull some questions throughout the entire process when you are asking and speaking with the candidates as a way to ensure that what you're asking them is what is reflective of your community as well. Moving on to question five, this question asks, what would you like the board to consider during the hiring process? Again, I included some sample comments and suggestions, but I'll just touch on the topics here. They indicated that they would like the board to consider transparency and integrity, accountability, experience, and qualifications. Again, someone who can really connect with the community, someone who's student and teacher-focused, someone who shows special education, knows special education and inclusion. And again, this was something that was, I thought, mentioned a lot more than in the prior survey was the mention of special education and the understanding of special education, a long-term commitment to the district, and then an understanding of growth in facilities. So that's it for the community survey. The board also did conduct a staff survey. So staff were free to take this community survey, but the staff survey went a little bit more into depth on who is going to be their future leaders. So last year, the staff survey had 92 survey takers. This year, it had 68. So just a little less, but I think that's okay. You may have captured some both this year and last year. Again, I saw a lot of the same topics mentioned in both last year's survey and this year's survey. So going through, question one asked survey takers, what do you feel are the most important skills and or characteristics a superintendent needs to be successful in the Kuna School District? Some of the topics that I saw were transparency, honesty, integrity. Transparency is an overwhelming topic throughout all of the surveys, so it's mentioned a lot. Strong communication and listening skills, community connection, experience with growth and finance, support for teachers and staff, student-centered leadership, someone who's really focused on the students, and the courage and objectivity. Question two asked, how could the new superintendent go about establishing good public relations within the district and community? These were similar to the first question. They would like to see someone who's visible in the schools and in the community, someone who is open and transparent with communications and with their staff, someone who will listen and engage, someone who will collaborate with city and business officials, someone who's authentic and will follow through, and then someone who is able to balance community relationships. Question three asked, what core values should we look for in the next superintendent? And again, this is all really kind of repetitive. Transparency, honesty, integrity, student focus, inclusion, empathy, and respect, accountability, and consistency. Question four of this survey asked, would a superintendent foster a relationship of, or how would a superintendent foster a relationship of respect and collaboration with certified and classified staff? And survey takers said they want to see someone with visibility and approachability, someone who's able to listen and be inclusive, someone who will show recognition and appreciation of staff, someone who is transparent and is consistent, someone who will support professional growth, and someone who is fair. Question five said, please share a question you would like to ask the superintendent candidates and or what you would like the board to know. Again, I listed some sample questions here. I won't read through all of them. But some of the topics that I saw that were a major focus were, again, student-focused, support for teachers and staff, communication, transparency, and trust, growth, facilities, and overcrowding, fiscal responsibility and budgeting, special education, community relationships and public trust, commitment to public education and to the district itself, and then the leadership philosophy, their leadership philosophy and experience. Question six asked, what kind of changes would you like to see the new superintendent bring to the district? Some of the common things I saw were improved communication and transparency, support for teachers and staff, focus on student success and learning, growth in facilities and or planning, special education and department improvements, culture, morale, respect, community and city partnerships, and a fresh perspective or new leadership. And then finally, the last question that was asked in this survey was what programs would you like to see continued? Again, this one was very similar from last year's survey. They would like to see the career and technical education programs continue, Abbott and College and Career Readiness, Special Education and Student Support Services, Professional Development and Teacher Support, Elementary Literacy and Intervention Programs, Social and Emotional Learning and Positive Behavior Supports, Community Partnerships and Student Engagement Opportunities, Kindergarten Readiness, and District Traditions and Culture. So like I said, it was, a lot of the responses were very similar to last year's. It seems like you really got some great qualities to look for in the superintendent. I think this can help guide you.
Thank you for taking the time to shorten that for us so we could see. One thing I saw a lot of too was being engaged with the community, even like being close to the community, living in the community.
Yes.
Did you see a lot of?
I did see, yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the things I thought, okay, I saw a lot of that in there too. So thank you for doing that. So going ahead, do you want to do the brochure or do you want to?
Yeah, so the brochure, again, we will just need to update that brochure with just the updated timeline. And then there were some things. Chairman Nixon mentioned to me that there was something in the brochure about it being the 100th year celebration, but that happened last year. That's something we can easily change. This again was created when we started the process last year, and it just probably needs a few minor tweaks, like I said, updating the timeline, so.
And then the other thing, Abbott, is the Abbott program. I don't know, because we had really been into that. All of our schools have. So that's something I'd like to maybe have the superintendent know that we have that program. What do they know about that, you know? Because really, it's beginning to take hold, and so our scores are taking some changes, and it's been really good for our district. So. And the professional learning committees and Kedidos, yeah. We need to, sorry.
PLCs.
PLCs, yeah. So I don't know if I saw that, but just put those two.
Okay, yeah. We can absolutely certainly update that. If you see anything else that you think needs updated, well, you can send me an email and I'll get it updated.
Yeah. Yeah, and with a 100-year graduating class, I just think if you present that, you know, last year to the place, we realized that.
And if there's anything also that you feel really stood out from the survey results that you want to add into here, maybe you want to update, add some qualities or add some comments maybe about the district and why you're proud of the Kuna School District, just let me know that as well. I can work with the board chairman to get that added.
I like what you have. I mean, four pages, and it really, you want it to be concise, and I think you did that in stating a lot of what we're looking at, our mission and our values. I thought that was really good. Any other suggestions or anything else? Okay. Be great. Then the timeline, right now, you want to kind of update that.
Yep. So right now, today, we just reviewed the survey results. The next step will be that the board will determine the application form. That's pretty simple. You already have an opening and closing deadline. The only thing the board really needs to decide is what essay questions you want to add to that application form. You have that you will be opening the application on November 17. My recommendation would be to make that decision a few, like a week-ish prior to that, only because ISBA's convention is the week before that opens, and we want to be sure that we get the application prepared and ready to go. Once we have the essay questions, it's very simple for us to create the application. In our system, we use what is called Revellis. It's used nationwide through all superintendent associations that do superintendent searches, and we can set it so that we can create it early and it will just publish on the day of the opening.
So we're looking probably at that first week in November, making sure that you have the essay questions.
Yes.
Okay, do you guys, how do you feel about, do you want to get together before then? Do you want to just maybe text or email me some questions that you have? And then I can work with you through email or how, what's the best way to do that? What do you guys want to see?
Email.
I mean, if you think the email's not working, it's our love, you know, we need to be together. I love them together as well.
Okay.
Because I think a discussion is always good.
Yeah, and I have no problem with that. I just want to do it as best for you guys. Yeah, no, I have no problem with that. We can meet. Yeah, we can meet, we can set a time after the meeting. Can we do that or does it have to be public?
Yeah, we'd have to be public.
So then we get this I public session.
For a second.
Yeah, okay. Because there'd be more of us. So I guess we need to look, just to see what dates will look good for you guys then. Oh, watch my phone. Yeah, that's what I would assume now would be nice to get done. Right, but the first week in November. Is when we want to make sure we get that to her. Yeah, first week in November would work, I think.
Let's do it.
Let's double-check here. I am fine with Thursday the 6th as the work session for us. Is that something that you can come out to?
Absolutely. Let me double-check my schedule, that that works, that I feel like it does. So if I'm available, I will come out, or I can be available by phone or whatever.
Works for us. Michael, is there any time that you would need with a farming or evening?
No, I think six or seven is fine.
Six o'clock in the evening, so let's put that down. So work session?
Yeah.
All right, that's what we'll do for the next work session.
And then just, that's kind of the next step. Once the application is open, it will stay open. The board has on here that it will close on January 30. I do want to let the board know that you may see me at the start, but I will be stepping away in February. I am expecting. So you are in good hands. Our board consultant or board's, I'm blanking on his title. Jason Lloyd with ISBA will be stepping over in our place, in my place, to assist you when I go on maternity leave. And he's great. I think some of you have maybe met him, but I just wanted to let you know.
Does he work with Phil?
He does, yes, yeah.
So I make a motion that we have a work session, or I need a motion. So I'll make that for you guys.
You can make it.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we have a work session November 6 at 6 o'clock to go over essay questions for the superintendent application. Any more discussion? Okay, Kirsty, I, Michael, J D, and Alana. All right, thank you, J D. You need to get home and get some rest.
As long as the question is in there about unlimited tacos or sushi.
What's sushi?
Chairman trustees, I just, there's no action of mine. This is just a reminder of where we're at in that process. You guys asked for us to collect some information on the sale of the Forestry Gym. Seal bid packet has been created. We did that following I know code as well as our policy. We did it with general assistance. The bid acceptance period opened the night, and it will be open through the sixth to advertise and serve in the paper. If you study the paper, they're also online, as per code and policy. There's an opening of the sealed bids. Everyone's worried that you guys don't want to be there. We opened sealed bids yesterday for phase two of Kuna School. We opened sealed bids probably in a couple of weeks' period. We do that all the time. Just because we open them, it doesn't, you don't do anything with them. Then we'll bring them to you at the board meeting where you guys will have action. So we just have to have an opening. That way, if you did a bid, you can see us open them. It's not me hooking up my uncle with the Forestry Gym. There's a process and we follow it.
Is that the transparency?
Absolutely. Consideration of being, we get the number of ballots for the board meeting. And there, we'll also remind you that you don't have to accept any of the bids, that none of the bids meet that threshold of the appraisal. Then what are the next steps and what's this whole process? Or are we done and you guys don't want to sell anymore? Those are all your options. For sure. This just shows you that where it's at on our website. If a person has reached out to us, they have been also told that this is on the website, where to go on the website, and where and how to get there.
All right, thank you. Any questions or anything? So.
That comment about tacos and sushi, that was on the survey.
I didn't know that was on the survey.
The question.
Was one of the answers.
If you're to ask.
If they like tacos or sushi?
Which one they would prefer.
I think I did see that on. I thought it was a great idea to talk about their sushi personally. All right, and we're ready for the Ag Lab, Lab update and action.
All right, Chairman Ex- members of the board, thank you. Land Lab update. Tonight, we're going to hopefully give you an update and an action item. And then we give directions from the board to the board with formal processes with the city and Kuna regarding the proposed Ag item. So we just need to formalize the process. And that's all the timelines, the background. Mr. Wonderful, Super Bickers here, secured a grant of just under $1 million to build a land lab. We quickly found, it's a lot of work, and we got to do this. As you can see, we're going to talk about a portion of the corner lot that is in need for the city and is crucial for us, so how to help with that. So we've done some, Travis has got a working group to fundraise and to look at how to operate to answer some of the questions you guys asked back in last March. And then that's for ring Stuart and Travis, visit other places in the state that have these existing programs already, these land labs already. So good input from that. Reminder, this is the view of the plan. When it's all said and done, just like you know, we might start out with this. We might have to get all that, but we have to have the end product. Then the city has to formalize it. So what's in question is this right here. As you can see, it would really just be used for parking, but not really. But it does hold value for us and holds value for the city, so. Here's the timeline. So we are in a pre-application stage, so our first meeting is Thursday. And that's where we will. And that's where we will say, okay, the city, you have, you need a place, a place to put pumps, a lift station. We need to get the permits and the fees and those things. So, what can we, what can we work with here? So then we'll come back to you in November. And then we hopefully get our PZ application. That takes some time. And then hopefully, everything's in agreement. We go from there and we give our counsel and then hopefully they approve it and then we can break down, this is best case. Questions? So, we need direction from you tonight. In November, we'll give you the proposal, we give it back. And then in December, we're going to hopefully answer all those questions you guys had last March. Like how to fund it, how to maintain it, and how do we, the long-term effects of that. So, we need a proposal, a proposed agreement to bring it out to you. So, potential action, what we're asking for tonight, next slide, is we authorize us to represent enter formal processes, submit formal applications to develop the proposal city. The proposal must include what for that corner, the station for us and the city. So, we kind of need your correction on what can we negotiate with on that.
Can you go back to the question?
What's a ballpark, what's a ballpark of the city's fees for this development?
That's what we'll find out more on Thursday. Because it's, we are a technically commercial entity. And so, those fee schedules are different based on source footage. What are we counting first, right? Because these are, these are bins, these are, so we, we don't know yet. Because will they make us improve the sidewalk? Will they make us improve, will, can we put gravel? Do we have to do pavement? Those city code things that they, that they require. And so, what can we do in kind of exchange for to make this program, bait this ground?
Do you remember what we asked last March?
Yeah. As far as what?
Like what the questions were that were asked? Are we due, like what the questions were, is that what we?
What? As far as what?
The questions that we asked last March.
You got, the questions from what we understand is, how's it, I mean, once it's built, who's going to?
Who's going to maintain it?
Who's going to maintain it? How do we, how do we?
Where's that money coming from? Those are our questions.
So, those are the questions. And so, Travis in December is going to, how was the answer, as we said before?
I guess one of the things I'd like to see, and I'm not sure financially how much that piece is. I think that's what you're asking, J D, is how much that pieces worth?
No, no. I was asking how much these impact fees and city fees would be for this project roughly? Because we, I feel like I, I can't make a decision on if we're going to give away that property to the city unless I know what their cost is going to be.
And I guess I'd like to see our permits and fees waived. And that's, for me, that's one of the things, that's not the only thing possibly. Not the only thing, but I think that, you know, if we're going to do this for the city, they can return.
Equivalent value. And that's how we see it, is how can we work with the city? Get this product off the ground. So then, you know, whether it's fees, permits, or protections, or dues, or things that we kind of pay for, there's an exchange for those.
That's kind of something I'm looking at, without the city to some.
Sorry.
Go ahead, no, 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 you go for it.
That, that corner, how much property, is that, is that five acres or?
No, this whole thing is five acres. This is a point three or point five block.
What is that? Oh, she didn't have the block.
It's just the corner. So, this is the land holding, like I said, this is, it's not an impact to us. It's a part of the operation of this. Yes, it is property that's valuable, but it's also made.
It's part of our property.
Correct.
And, you know.
The city came to us a while back with the idea about that. And I thought that we came up with a number and then the talks just vanished.
Yeah, because we, we didn't know, because they wouldn't exist. We didn't know where we're at, because we didn't enter formal, formally, have a formal application. We were just preliminary talks and now we're entering the formal process. So, now we need a definite.
I thought that they came, I thought that they came to us about that little chunk of property before, like not involved with this project, I thought. Did they not?
I don't.
I thought they did come with, I think they did come with a lift product, lift station, but it wasn't necessarily there. It was someplace else they needed in our property. That's what I remember, kind of, that they wanted it.
I mean, I guess, I would assume that the impact fees for this are going to be probably fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars, I would think.
Yeah.
Or maybe even a hundred.
We won't know that until our pre-application meeting, which we had scheduled a few weeks ago. We got to postpone it so that we can come before you again.
So, I mean, I.
For direction, basically.
I mean, no, we not, I mean, I guess if they're going to give us a, you know, break on our impact fees and city fees, then yeah, I guess, I'd be okay with that.
Well, I, I, I look at that as just a start. I don't know what else, you know.
I guess that would have to be in the proposal.
Yeah, so that's what they, so do you give us, like, what is the minimum, I guess, for us to go with maximum or to go?
You said it's point three acres?
Point three, point five. They'll have the exact what they'll need. Because they have their layout, their, well, their.
I was determining the size of what.
What they want.
Yeah.
Let's say a minimum, probably fifty grand, I think.
I'm not sure what all the permits and all that takes. I'm just going to be honest with you. That's not my expertise, but I think, yeah.
This gives you a chance to go forward.
Correct.
Right.
Give us a ballpark, right? Because one thing we don't want is if it's like forty-eight thousand, then it's not a project because we can't even that. Stuart has the timeline that he has for the, for the funding of this.
Well, I guess it depends on how many fees they want to waive, or if they waive any fees.
Or how can we plan, like on sidewalks and parking, those have to.
That's what, that's what I think.
You know what, the impact fees for my demo office, when I was twenty years ago, were like sixteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And all they was doing was building out the building. But that was ACHD, you know.
Yeah. Exactly.
So, I would assume this is going to be four, five times.
We'll find out.
And then you bring that back to us and then we make decisions afterwards.
Correct.
I, I, I think we empower you guys to be able to, hopefully, hopefully they will.
At least fifteen thousand dollars in the return value of, of for the same project.
I, I don't want to. Yeah.
We really don't want to throw out a number. We, we actually just want to know what are the fees, what.
I want to know what the permits and fees are.
What is the land asset you need? And then we move on from that.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to, I'd like to, I think that's better. I'd like to hear how much the permits and fees are.
So, we're, we're doing it at ten o'clock on Thursday morning.
Excellent.
And, and so, yeah, we'll have some.
Does that give you an idea then?
Yeah.
Action means.
Thank you. And that's what I'd like to know what they are.
So, the policy is waving the fees and, or finding out what the fees are to be waving in those processes.
Can somebody negotiate from there?
Yeah, I make a motion that we give you the, I guess, the permission to negotiate fees for the corner of the land for the lab of, of the city.
And do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any other discussion? All right, Kirsty, I, Michael, J D.
Aye.
And I, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you, guys. Thanks for all that you're doing. This is going to be great for our community, so thanks.
Thank you, good luck.
I can remember.
All right, see you then.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Check everything. So now, we're going to move to the mower, superintendent Brian.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he'd already done that. But of course, C P A.
Our team is just in action now because he presented.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Got it.
Unless you want me to give a gant.
No, no, I'm sorry. You have done enough, let me tell you, you're doing great.
I wish, I wish that we approved it.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, Kirsty.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
And I, Mike. All right, now, we're going to the mower. First, I didn't realize mowers were that expensive. I was like, sorry, I was like, whoa. Of course, I just have a little.
Robbie and I remember the meeting in two thousand and six when we were here. I think it was about seventy, I think, J D, were you trustee? It was about seventy, seventy thousand dollars, the same mower, it's just.
It's almost doubled.
They really want me to say it was either two thousand and six or two thousand and seven. Six. This is the most people that are ever in the audience, probably. We obviously would like to go with the preferred bid instead.
The equipment that we're.
That our main issue rather go, remember the last one we bought was in two thousand and nine. Both of our models were six and nine. We can keep them going one at a time. This would allow us to maybe make a lot more out of two with the, the best. A lot of our complaints that we get are, the grass is too long, you guys take too long to mow. Not by choice, it's five foot minutes, so.
The only question I have on the bid, I turn the quarter, there won't be a set up fee like for the application because usually they.
Do the same thing. Do you think it's missing from the bid?
I think so. Every time I buy something, it's always.
Do you want to do, not that I would ever take, as a do, like an action item, but that.
I mean, it could still be less. Just the amounts can be different, I guess.
Do you want, is there a number that it should be that?
And we, that's money coming from.
That's my question.
Just money cannot come from household money. So, it, this money is coming from the interest earned from our household money.
Okay.
From what I understand.
So, is the interest earned because, that he was talking about, that we can use it for that? Okay, so we can use it for that. So, is there a maintenance, is that what you're kind of?
The other, the other one has, it's a free setup delivery. I mean, it's, they're, they set it solid, so they got to get it up here.
Okay. And the other one, gotcha. I see.
For the toil, I mean, that's, there's no.
It doesn't say. They're just going to drug. That's a good question. My question too is, is there a maintenance on it that if it breaks down, or they warranty, maybe it's warranty type?
It should have, usually.
Eight years, okay, that's, that was my question. So, I guess when we make the motion, the motion is we may put understanding that we want that checked on before, correct?
Well, that says that Toro's not going to hold this price in past November.
Well, it was a five percent scriptage might affect the price. Because of periods. Three to six months time, so the price can be increased, period six months.
Five percent.
Yeah, they're, they're hoping that we do this as soon as possible, so it's not, they're going to be mowing with this mower, this one, it's so, it's delivering time for that.
There's an office.
To accept that this, and with the exception that we find out what the amount frame setup delivery is, and it's less than that.
And it's still.
And it's still less than the. I can't imagine it being what, almost forty thousand dollars.
Well, it won't be higher than that.
So, then I guess that would be our bid. So, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve bid one.
Do I have a second?
Do we need to say a whole thing?
Yeah.
You need to say the dollar amount.
Bid one for the turf equipment irrigation incorporated in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and eight more cents.
With the exception that we're not putting into the bidding.
Provision.
Yeah. That would be with your motion there, J D.
I mean, someone else can make another motion, that's no motion.
That's his motion, so is there? Is there any second to that motion? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. And, Michael?
I.
And I, Mike. All right. Phase two on the Kuna High HVAC and fire system, again.
Yeah, and, and so, Ben Tim was not able to be here. Remember that, and I wish trustee Lo was here as well. Johnny and I tried, remember, to do our own bid with the asphalt, came back twice. And then there was some, some stuff that you guys asked us to not do that again, if it's going to have the change orders. When we can rely on our construction company to be our construction company, things are fabulous. They just couldn't be here to present. But they said that the bidding process went extremely well. They've attached, you guys have the bid tabulation, hopefully, and your bid package for you to do. As you can see on the bid tabulation, they had a great showing for them. Having seven companies come to the bid process was, was more than they expected. You ever see multiple bids in all packages except for steel, although the steel bid was right in line with what they anticipated? They will not, I can't do any tricks, any bribes, they will not give me numbers. Because for me to have a number, it just makes it so much easier, but they don't want to promise a number and then come back. But I know they know their numbers and for them to say that it came back is what everything is, it is, it's really good news. We estimated this project in completion, we were beginning six and eight million. Right now, with Phase 1 and Phase 2, we're right around six million dollar. So, and we will be shutting Kuna High down for the summer, for all intents and purposes, to finish this project. I mean, we'll have to farm out our volleyball and our basketball to all of our other gyms. This project is immense for this Phase 2. Since Phase 1, we included all ounces for a few of the work scopes that are difficult to find. Overall, we're happy to level competition on Saturday and think the low contractors will do a great job in the industry. Your reminder, to have your bid summary, you have to take the risk of the money is from Palaceville 521. This project was part, is part of our year two of our tenure plan. And Ross and Amy Greek will be the next time you see me. And they think that that project is simple, small enough that they can combine them into one project. So, they'll bid it as one project. If you click, it's broken into four parts. So, whoever does the motion has to.
Read it.
Have to read the AM, you have to read all four combined, but.
You'll be skipping.
Mountain Steel is our preferred bid for the structure and miscellaneous steel. Plumbing is Acco, same company that did the Phase 1. They don't worry that if it was two different companies, because they split that phase perfectly, but wow, that continuity. Acco also was HVAC at one point two. And then Anderson Wood Construction Company was the electrical. Remember, the electrical is obviously tying in, the HVAC is also the fire alarm.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve Kuna High School Phase 2 project. Structural miscellaneous steel, mountain steel for eighty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. And the plumbing with Acco Engineering Systems for six hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and eight dollars. The HVAC with Acco Engineering Systems for one point, what are they, one million two hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars. And the electrical, Anderson and Wood Construction Company Incorporated, but for one hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, J D.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Kirsty.
Aye.
So, thank you. All right, so, I guess I have the next part, which is for the ISBA resolutions. So, just to give you an update, ISBA is our organization that gives us an avenue to let the legislature know what we need as a school board and how we feel about things that are coming up for the legislature. All of these resolutions that we're going to go over come from every district. It doesn't come from ISBA, they come from the different districts. And we get to say if we approve it or not. So, I'm going to go over each resolution and when we go to ISBA convention, then we're able to vote and make our needs be known. So, the first one is called increase state funding for special education services. And you can see who submitted it. And basically, what they're asking is that they go to the legislature and let them know that we need more money to cover special ed. We only get thirty percent, federal government only pays thirty percent, state only pays so much. And we're finding, a lot of districts are finding that they have to go to general budget to get their money for special ed. And you can see, he's, Jonathan's shaking his head. So, we would like to have some more money set to special ed. So, that is a do pass. And I just need to know how you bag it still, because I'll, is that a yes or a no again? Okay, so I'm going to put that down, all right? The second proposal is amending I O code to broaden the definition of rural school districts. And the fruitland came up with that. So if you read this, right now, the bill or the law says that you can only, you have to have fewer than twenty. Students per square mile, and so many people in your population, twenty-five to thirty, they'd like to add that, because they're finding out that some of these rural schools are increasing. But at the same time, they're still rural, and they still have rural issues. So they'd like to increase that, so it's fewer than twenty-five students, and they want to increase the population, I believe, to thirty thousand. So.
How many do we want to support?
Well, I don't know, we'll have to go through each one, I guess, is that what you're looking at? Because they're all different. So this one, just so you guys know, eighty percent already of our state is considered rural.
So they're just asking to go from twenty to twenty-five?
Correct, and then from thirty-five up to thirty-five.
I think we move on, I think that's fine.
Okay, so that's a yes for all of us to vote on. So what happens is the ISBA takes these, and then they go to the legislature and know how we feel as school boards. Okay, number three is support for changes in federal funding. Okay, so this comes from the Marcy School District. And, in addition, a resolution calls for federal funds to be shipped into the state for education, and immediately sent to the school districts and charter schools. So, right now, this proposal is coming up because they are looking at doing away with the Department of Education at the national level, and that money will go to the state. And this school district does not want the state to put extra hoops in it, they want the money to come directly to us, without those extra hoops, and saying, well, and that's what this is saying. If, if the money comes back to the state, you know, then we want to make sure that that money comes to us and right away, and isn't caught up somewhere else or in another budget. Okay, so. All right. Okay, number four. Maintaining enrollment for online schools with traditional school districts. Okay, they gave a neutral position to this, because some districts actually have, believe it or not, that some of our rural schools, districts, have actually more people in virtual schools than they do in their brick and mortar schools. But they're not getting the funding that they need, if I remember correctly. So they would like to have maintaining open enrollment for online programs in traditional districts protects parental rights, supports local control, and prevents unfair restrictions that can limit educational options for adult families. So. Go ahead.
I should have known this, but, I mean, we still have some, we have online, we provide an online model two still, right?
No, please, go. We offer like opportunities through IDLA, and we don't have a Kuna School District online program yet, I know. Mr. Eddie's hoping to have that started at high school level by semester.
And this is, right, and the way to interpret this is, what they're saying is this preserves these school districts, that they can keep their virtual schools going and get the funding for it. I guess it'd be the best way.
So if we add an online part that would affect our enrollment numbers, as, like, if we had, if we supported an online program, and we supported this, we have more students come back to our district and do online, then that would also bring funds to pay for it, right?
Yeah, I think it's, it's allowing students like from West Ada to join our online program, from New Haven to join our online program.
Right, preserve open enrollment opportunities for students who wish to attend online, online.
Does this start as a life, as a school? We're not just gonna have a standalone school as our online.
No.
To start, we're just gonna offer online options.
Right, it's an open enrollment opportunity for students to, to do that.
I think it affects S, so maybe we could just.
Okay. Got it, all right.
How soon do you think it will happen online?
It won't be a school, like you said, it'll be just classes, like you could take your math class.
Okay, so then this would not increase our number of our students, okay, yeah, neutral.
Okay, number five, in opposition to diverting additional public dollars to private or local schools, simply additional tax credits, vouchers, credits for scholarship dollars, amend the article one X, and allow public funds to be used for private schools. Basically, this comes from the Boise School District, and basically, it is saying, we know that we have vouchers, but we want the money held to fifty million, we don't want it increased. And that's basically what they're saying, so we don't want you to take more money and make it, increase it, along with sending the message that we're not happy with this, and if we can do anything to lower it, we're all for it.
Amen.
So that's kinda what this one is saying.
Check.
Okay, so, is that for everybody then? All right. The next one. Draft and support legislation that demands Idaho Code sixty-three two, two five oh one, blah blah blah, to include faves and nicotine pouches to be taxed as tobacco products, and expand the purposes for which public schools may use such revenue to include fave education and cessation, hiring mental health counselors, and our school resource officers. So I don't know if you guys know this, but we get a proportion of the cigarette tax, and I think chewing, I guess, tobacco.
So they're asking for the taxes to come back to us?
No, we already get them, they're asking that we, yeah, exactly. We, right now, we don't get any, if you, by vaping things, we don't get anything back from that, but this would increase that tax base, which would in the end help us, because it comes to, is it called, what's that called, Save Schools? Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the money, so that would go there, so they want to increase it by taxing more.
This, but then we can, then it gives us the ability to use that money the way we see fit.
Correct.
Education, cessation, mental health, counselors.
Right.
School resource officers.
That's how we would use that money.
Because at first, you're like, oh, we're gonna get money from people playing. Tobacco, you're like, that's weird.
But we already do that, we get money.
I know, it's pending.
So it's broadening that, so that encompasses, one of the points they brought up for us, that there are more people vaping now than smoking. And so, you know, we're not getting that much. So anyway, that was one of the points, so.
We can use that for the education purposes for vaping and cessation, then for.
Counseling, SROs, I think it's great, okay, got that. All right, the next one, the dancing superintendents on the career ladder, should they return to the classroom? So as you know, we have a career ladder, that's what they come off of when you do, when you go to the teacher, when they want to say mediation, non-mediation, I don't want to say negotiations, thank you. However, this ties district level staff, we're excluded, so let's say, and maybe you can help me a little bit on this one, if the superintendent needs to go back to the classroom, where are you gonna put him on the career ladder? And so if this is, not that we wouldn't want you to go back to the classroom.
I think she would.
Yeah. Right. So, we, you would not get money reimbursed if you did that with her.
Right, she would match you professionally.
And most, a lot of these, a lot of these have to do with rural schools that find themselves, you know, in that option, I don't think Kim wants to go back and teach PD, but thank you very much, I'm sure you see that. But anyway, yeah, so the whole idea is, yeah, yeah, so if, if we were to put her back, to make sure we get reimbursed, not that we would, not that we would, I'm just trying to make it so readable, but that's the thing.
Administrators, what do you guys think, like, should, if, if you're ten, twenty years as administrator, I mean, most likely you're not gonna go back and teach, but if you did, do you want that to count on your career ladder as an administrator?
It, it doesn't, it wouldn't come to that teacher's pay, it comes to the district.
The district, we would get reimbursed more.
So it's a one thousand percent, oh, we have a retired teacher.
It's a no right now.
Yeah, we'd have a retired administrator right now teaching at bridges, and we would, we don't receive.
Reimbursed as well.
Because he, yeah, we'd do two different evaluations.
So, it would be, it's basically reimbursement if they go back on the career ladder.
It helps, it doesn't help that they pay for it.
You just can't.
We get more money. All right, the next one is number eight, resolution for modification of Idaho code to exclude non-residents from benefiting from capital gains, exemption and redirect additional tax revenue to fund K twelve public education. So, again, this is gonna be able to find more funds for us, that's the whole idea. We know that the governor has asked that the education department hold back money as it do their budgets this year, and so, I didn't realize this, but apparently, somebody who does not a residence here, if they move in here and do farming or whatever, they only have to pay sixty percent, is that it, exemption from the state?
Tax code.
Yeah. Yeah, so they only get, they only have to pay that much. So this is asking that you kind of do apples to apples, in other words, if you were doing business here, then you should pay to help the education system here. Now, if you look, they do, I think this one was a neutral, because as they were going through it, they found out that this could upset some industries in our rural communities, like timber, agriculture, if you're gonna start taxing them more, because some of these people come because of the great tax, tax that they give. So that's why it's the neutral. So, it actually is hopefully to give us more funds. Now, you need to remember, these are not gonna be laws, these are just things that are presenting, that ISBA would go to the legislature and say, hey, can you look at this? And also, they do, when we go to vote on this at our conference, they have asked for more explanation for some of this, because of that. So basically, for me, I'm, I'm all about getting us more funds wherever we can, but that's just me, so I would be a yes at this point, unless they would tell something different.
That's a yes.
Okay. How do you guys feel about it? There is no neutral, yes, yes or no, so if you say neutral, I'll say no.
It said neutral on the stage.
Neutral means they're recommend, the board, so the board, board, the board of board members, like Region Three, we're invited to agents to decide whether these are good or not, depending on our school board. And so, the, all of those board members that are on those committees said, hey, this might be neutral, yes, we're gonna get funds, but some of the rural places, it may hurt, because they may not wanna come in now, because you're increasing the funds. But that doesn't mean that's gonna happen. I guess for me, I'm looking at, anywhere within the legislature, we need more funds, and we need more funds, so that's what I look at. So, I'm a yes. You say no, okay. And Michael?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay. All right, next one. Okay, this kind of goes back to career ladder two, recognition of post-secondary teaching experience for rural. Pleasmit. So again, this is one that is kind of for the, the smaller rural school district, so there are times that they can't find a teacher to teach accounting, so they ask someone from the community to teach it, and they're not able to fund it on the career ladder, and they aren't getting reimbursed. So they're asking, hey, if we're finding someone that's able to teach this, can we get reimbursed as a school board, or as a district? So I think that's what I read that, but you guys are, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so I kind of went through this, so it's.
My biggest question would be, like, if you come from California.
Right.
I have to look at your evaluations and then determine if your evaluation equates to our evaluation, and if, if there's a form we fill out full of tenant forms, I don't know how, I don't know, how post-secondary teachers are evaluated, so are they just saying, any experience instantly gets you to think?
They're saying highly qualified professionals apply.
Because they taught at a post-secondary.
Whereas, whereas many highly qualified professionals with years of experience teaching in accredited colleges are discouraged from transits, change to K twelve.
It just would be really interesting to see how they make us determine if they.
Yeah, because it just says either those teachers, it doesn't say how.
Um, I think it does take into consideration out of state.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole process for, for public education, for ideal public education.
So it's, if I kind of read it right, it was like, can we take these highly qualified professionals and put them on the career ladder?
Because they worked at post-secondary.
Because they worked at post-secondary, so that we can get more reimbursement in the, in the fields of our, yeah, salaries. So I guess that's the way I read it, but.
And also, the question is, is it just more like adjunct class, or is it a full-time employment?
I think they're all referencing. It's like a full-time university professor.
Yeah.
Or K college.
Yeah.
I'm a yes.
Okay. Yeah, yes, okay. All right, next one. Okay, this, Kim might be announced for this one, this is, oh, ten, eleven, and twelve, this withdrawn, so we can go to thirteen, support for the autonomy and governance of the Idaho High School Activities Association. So my understanding is that the legislature was wanting to get involved in the Idaho Schools, the High School Activities Association, and this says, no, we don't want the legislature involved in our school, high school activities. And so it preserves autonomy, protects integrity, fairness, and consistency of extracurricular programs while safeguarding them from undue external influence. So, is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, I think that's right, we had a big discussion about that at the, even the Region Three, right?
This is your one answer, yes.
Yeah. So it's just to say to the legislature, we don't need you interfering with us, we've got our own board, we do our own things, and thank you very much, so that's kind of a little hard to front. Okay. All right. All right, so the next one, number fourteen, open enrollment program and building capacity limits. Okay, so this is one, so once we decide on these resolutions, then ISBA will take them to the legislature for like two years, and then they'll go until we say they want them to be done. So this is one that was passed two years ago, it's reappearing. It advocates program cap, so that your students come first in special programs, like your CTE, special GT. It's really to clean up some of the language on when districts can have open enrollment, so that it doesn't put extra problems on your district. So, when I say open enrollment, I mean, like, when we have CTE programs, we take some elder kids, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so that's the open enrollment part, so this is just saying that our kids come first.
Yes.
That's basically.
We're passive, and we don't have to.
That we don't have to accept them, so I think that's a good thing, so I, I'm a yes.
Yes.
All right, we're coming to the end almost. Number fifteen, K twelve funding formula principles. And this goes back to, before the pandemic, they went on the percentage of people who come one day, and this is basically saying, no, no, if we have five hundred and sixty kids, we want five hundred and sixty amount of money for those five hundred and sixty kids. So basically, at the end, this is, we want to be based on the number of students enrolled, and not based on the number of students that are present on a given day. So this is going back to.
Placed enrollment.
Yes, yeah. And I definitely agree with that. All right, our last one. Aligning Idaho Schools Age and Countability Departments. Now, this is by the Caldwell School District, we get docked if we have students drop out at sixteen, it comes to, I wanna say, we have to reach ninety percent of kids graduating. So if we have someone at sixteen who says they wanna drop out, we have no, we can't stop them from doing it, they do it, and so our hands are kind of tied. So this is saying we want to raise that to eighteen. Or seven, seventeen, no, it's eighteen, I thought it was eighteen, yeah, sixteen to eighteen. So basically, if required school, they want to change the school age from sixteen to eighteen, unless the pupil has graduated early or has received their GED. So what kind of doctrine happens if they, because my understanding is we get docked by what people say.
Well, if, if, if a student decides to drop out of school.
That's not even, they're sixteen. But we do get docked for it, correct?
What, did you say?
Perhaps it hurts our graduation rate, which has to be ninety percent. So what Caldwell is saying is we would like that changed to eighteen, or if they have a GED, that's different, so in other words, take that away, yeah.
Because now if you get your GED, you're not counted as a dropout.
Right.
Which would be huge for us, because so many kids do finish their GED, and it still counts as a dropout for us.
Are they going to transfer?
Yeah.
But if they, right now, if they get a GED, they're still counted as a dropout.
Even though it's the graduation.
We, we tried to run a resolution on that very topic. When Joy was still here.
Yeah. Yeah. We've tried, tried it a couple of times. And this is another one that comes back here after here because it would help us. And it, and we don't, our hands are tied, we can't say to someone, we can't drop out.
The kids don't care, right?
Yeah.
The GEDs are cute.
Yeah. So how do you guys feel about that? Yes, no? Okay. So you're okay with it? Okay, okay. All right. That is my part now. I don't know how long it took, I was trying to go as fast as I could, so. All right. So I will, I will go ahead and during the business meeting at our conference, then I will go ahead and vote for those who do so and not for those who don't. All right, so now we are on, oh, Mr. Gray's policy.
We have six policies that are up for amendment. You have any questions?
I didn't have any questions. I, the questions I have, I asked you and I'm sure you'll, maybe you don't. So I didn't have any questions. All right.
I make a motion that we approve the first reading of policies two ninety-two, two ninety-two point one, four fourteen, four forty-nine, four fifty-seven, six sixty-one. Second.
All right, any other discussion? JD? Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I thought you were asking us these questions.
Yeah.
No.
You're good.
It's all good. Yeah, my question was, what is the Delta D bond? It's my question, exactly.
The notes I have from our attorney was that this policy should have been deleted in two thousand and twenty-two, that it was rolled in the policy two thousand and sixteen at that time. I had written down that you wanted more information about this. I understand that Fidelite bond is like overarching over a whole bunch of different bonds that we hear.
Yeah, well, it says chairman of the board, I kind of take note of that.
I need more information.
Yeah. Yeah. So are we going to go ahead and revisit?
It's just first read, so if I, I'll come back and get, I'll get.
Yeah, I just didn't know what it exactly meant, what is the Delta D.
Yeah, our attorney said this was an outdated policy.
Yeah.
And I'll have more of those.
And I didn't know if that means it went into another policy too, so those were things.
Two sixteen or two sixty-six.
And do I have a motion to remove this policy?
I make a motion to remove policy eight oh two, fidelity bond with the second read, understanding what that means and where it is on to.
Yep. And our second?
Second.
Any more discussion? JD?
Aye.
And Michael?
Aye.
And Kirsty?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right.
The last three were adoptions. Just recently asked, why didn't she combine workforce skills and career technical schools? They are both, I'm going to be in relevant, of career technical. Workforce skills leads to all CTE courses and the requirements of everything that Dr. Finlay can need, that all CTE classes have to do. And then career technical schools is just a very small few of us, they get, used to be CT at, what's it called now? Used to be, uh, CTS, CTC, career technical, et cetera. And cute school district has a career technical center, it's over all of our career and classes at both K-18. So we do get extra funding for this. We should have always sent this policy in place as well.
Yeah. One of the things I noticed, some of these policies are two thousand and four, two thousand and eleven, some of them are updating and adding, so good job.
As much as everyone makes fun of me, we have gone and got a lot of work done.
Yeah, we're almost done. I hope we're nearing. That was my question. Did you guys have any other questions or concerns?
I make a motion that we approve the first reading of six sixty-four, six seventy-five, and seven thirty-two.
Okay. And any more discussion? All right, Kirsty? Michael? And JD? And I'm an aye. Did you want to say something else?
No, there's one more second.
Oh, that one, yes. That one slid in.
And you marked out the eight, you asked.
All right.
We did make changes to five sixty-six, not because of any of you, but because when our counselors went over this in their training, they did say that procedures, that the procedures weren't listed. There's been a pattern and a request in the last years to be more transparent about procedures, so if you click on policy five sixty-six. This is what our counselors currently do. So starting right here, the superintendent does need will be responsible for drafting the main procedures relating to suicide prevention, intervention, and post-vention procedures will be viewed on an annual basis, updated as necessary, based on the crime of state law. And then it goes through what the prevention procedures are, the intervention, and the post-vention. But it just took those procedures and put them in the policy.
And that was the only change. I make a motion to approve the second reading of policy five sixty-six.
I was second.
I second.
Any other discussion? JD?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Do you have a motion? To accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any other discussion on that? Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael? JD?
I mean, I.
And I'm an aye. What an aye. I think we're good with the order. So here we go. So we are having a KEF auction, even though that says KEA, it's KEF, Kuna Education Foundation Auction. And I want to thank you guys, the board is doing their own basket this year, so yay. And it will go on, help me, in May, is it, I don't know, May, October twenty-first, is it, to the one first, you go online to make your bids and to take a look at all the baskets. You have some fabulous baskets this year.
I have a gift to make in the calendar too.
You need to give it to me because I have that basket. That will work. All right. Also, Zone Three and Fort Trust reelection is November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. And I hope the public takes a good look at the, those that are running, I think it's important, so just say that. November fourth, there is no school because we're having an election. And next board meeting will be November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and the Veterans Day assemblies are Fremont, November tenth, Kuna High School, and Swamp Fall, November